What did you say?
We're good to go, Kelly.
Okay, thanks. All right, welcome everyone to our Thursday, February 18th. Caucus, our regular meeting for the Albany County Council for the record JR, will you just call out?
Sure, council members present are Ballerin, Conti, Fahey, Farrell, Flynn, Love, Doschet, O'Brien, Anani, Kimbrough, Conti, Howie, from the staff, myself, Daniel Gillespie, City Clerk, Senior Legislative Aid, Michelle Andre, and Senior Assistant Corporation Counsel, Brett Williams.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so just jumping into the agenda. For, is Cory in here?
Yeah.
No, okay. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting, we'll have our Monday, February 1st to 2021 meetings. I'll be offering for approval. Okay. Next on to local laws. By Ms. Farrell, it'll be the the law delaying the tax bills. It again by Ms. Farrell, local RB, we received the message of necessity from, from the treasurer and the mayor's office, which will have to be read before we take it up. We were all wanted to be co-sponsors on that, is that correct? Delaying, so all co-sponsors, okay. Be voting on that. Next to local law G by Mr. Anani. Again, that passed the committee with positive, with a positive recommendation, that'll be passed. We'll be voting on it. It was local law G, next, local law J, we had some amendments from our last public safety meeting. Mr. Conti, you'll be amending that?
Yes, we'll move to amend.
Okay.
And distinct also want to note that, and I mean JR, maybe you want to chip chirp in, chip in, whatever.
Say something.
That there is a determination that this would be subject to a permissive referendum.
So yeah, general municipal law 23, it's because this is a curtailment of the executive branch. Because of the way discipline is handled, it's through the executive branch, this is a subject to a referendum.
So it would be amended tonight, we can move it for passage on, and there is language in there that references that move it tonight, I'm sorry, amend tonight, move it for passage at our meeting on May 1. And then it would be subject to referendum, which would occur in November.
You mean May 1 or March 1, Councilman Conti?
March 1.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, move it for passage at our March 1st meeting. And then it would be subject to the referendum, which would occur in November, the November general, at the November general election.
Yes, it would be nice to skip ahead, but you're not so fortunate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know why I'm thinking about that. Also, our local law M. Kelly, a little down further, that's the one that we was in the planning committee on Monday. Came out of the committee with, with a positive recommendation and amendments. Which Michelle sent out earlier, amended revised versions of this local law and the accompanying ordinance, so I wanted to move to amend that one tonight also.
Yep.
You've got mail.
And then that will be ready, hey, and that will be ready for
That was a throwback.
Yeah, I don't know. I usually don't get that, that will be ready for passage at our March 1st meeting also.
Okay, that was it for the local law. Next on to our ordinances held. Again, for the bacon, just again, you again, Mr. Conti.
Yeah, and actually on local laws, just going back and I wanted to withdraw one of these. Item number two, I mean, it's on ordinances, item number two, ordinance 4211218. So which is a was a zoning amendment, I'm going to move to withdraw that. And then the other ordinance, jumping forward was item number 10. That's ordinance 219220, that's the other ordinance related to the historic district, district demo issue. We're also going to move to amend that one tonight. But going to hold it so that both the local law and this ordinance can pass together at our March 1 meeting. And if anyone had any questions on the amendments, but I think the planning committee people were there and are familiar with what happened. And it reflects, you know, discussion of HRC reflects the recommendations from the law department. So everybody's on board with the amendments in this version, et cetera, building department, everyone else.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conti, the rest of the ordinance is held. On to resolutions introduced. Mr. Conti, the Water Authority, 1722.
Yeah, so we discussed this last one, this is the one requesting amendment to the Public Authorities Law that would give us confirmation authority over appointees to the Water Authority and the Water Board, something we've done in the past, previous council way back. I'd like to do that again, there are new assembly members now taking another stab at it. So I'd like to move to intro and pass that.
Yeah, and from our last, from our caucus, I asked that if members wanted to be co-sponsors of this, yes. Are we all?
Yeah, I had sent that out and I got a number of responses, I don't know if anyone else, you know, that happy.
Okay, co-sponsor, alright. Okay, we passed. Next by Ms. Fahey's reappearance of Jeff Sperry, it's got, it's an intro, it's 182221R. It'll be a referral to planning, I believe they're taking it up at the beginning of March. You have a March meeting, March 3rd, I believe, take that up, okay, so it's a referral to planning. Okay, next is Mr. Howie's resolutions, 192221R for the the strike breakers, we, we seem to be having an issue with the version of, of, of it that, that went out, there was a few of them, there were some amendments along the way at our last meeting, and I think we kind of, kind of got crossed up, so we're not quite clear. What on the, the final version. We know what the final version should be, but I believe the one that went out that folks were working off and even maybe some of the folks that are speaking was something different than what we're dealing with. So I, I, I know Tom, you want to move ahead with this and get going on it, but I think considering the issues that, you know, and not being clear on this, that, that maybe we could take it up at our next meeting, clear up, clear up the versions.
I don't understand, because I worked with JR on the updates, what basically was two updates. There was the rewrite where I took out demands and made it urge, and we also took out the names and addresses. And then the other thing was we added, because it got missed, the co-sponsored, we had Ousso, Alfredo, and Jenny wanted to be prime sponsors, so that was it, I mean.
Do you have and Mr. Pichardo, the the version that we need?
I'm pulling it up, I'm trying to pull it up right now, I'm just, I'm trying to VPN into the city's network right now, so let's just take it a moment, trying to pull it up, and then I'll send it right out.
Yeah, my fear is we got a lot of people sending comments, want to talk about it, I'd rather do it tonight, I don't want to, you know, do we want to have 30 people come next meeting too, I, you know.
Well, I mean, I mean, it would be fine for them to speak on it at this meeting, I don't know why they'd have to come back for the next meeting. If they, if they put their thoughts on it. What'd you say?
They believe strongly in it, I guess they would.
Yeah, I read, yeah, I read through, there's a lot of them, comments, so.
I forward the, the copy that I got, I believe the last amendment was add in Jenny Farrell as a prime sponsor. I just forwarded to the whole council.
And that's the final one I have, that I was about to send out myself.
And so just so we're clear, I mean, we had a discussion about this the last, at our caucus, so. I mean, if the amendments are correct, then the version is correct.
This is correct, I'm looking at it now, the, the big changes are there, so.
Which? Okay.
Fredo's hand is up, by the way.
Okay, Fredo.
Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't want to just cut in, but thank you, thank you, Kelly. I guess my question is, if there's any hesitation, any questions about it, what are the questions, or what, what's, what's, what are the concerns? I think the, the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting, you know, have been addressed with the language and, and what was asked to be included, to make people feel more comfortable with it. So I, I think, I think it's way to be moved forward today, and I feel comfortable with what we can only have to move forward today. Does anyone that has concerns, then let's, let's, let's hear those concerns.
Yeah, what I think you'd find is that it's, it's the same as, as the caucus enforceability and the like. We already had that conversation, so we, if we have the correct version, we'll, we'll move forward. If that, that's the, the final version, we'll be voting on 192221 Resolution by Mr. Howie, okay? All right. Seeing no hands. Okay, moving on next to, to NMC Resolution by Ms. O'Shea, it's Resolution 2022 21R, it's an MC, and it's for adding, Judy, want to go ahead and just say a few things, it's going to be a referral to housing and community development.
That's correct, the only reason why I'm doing this as an MC is I wanted to get the resolution and the resolution number in advance of Michelle's departure, so that we could get it into the notices that she has prepared for the March meeting, where we may be taking up this particular resolution. It is pro forma, it is the same kind of resolution that we have passed in the last two years with regard to our approval of the budget for ACDA. But it, you know, it's pending our actual approval, our actual review and approval of the expenditures in the discussions that we will have, so it's just an introduction so that we can convene, notice and convene meetings on it. Any questions?
Thank you, and I believe we have some, we already have dates for those scheduled meetings, which I don't have in front of me, but for, for housing, the community development committee. All right, intro.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so, okay, next, next MC is by Mr. O'Brien regarding the racist attacks on Kena, the Zoom bombing. It's Resolution 212221R, Mr. O'Brien, you want to, we're all co-sponsors on this.
Okay, yeah, I just felt that we should make a statement about it. It was a Kena meeting of it was two weeks ago, and I was present at it, and you know, there were a number, there was people crashed into the meeting and said very disturbing things, so I thought at least make a statement.
Okay, yeah, thank you, again, we're all co-sponsors, and they'll be passed. Next on the agenda, under Resolutions held, number four is mine, it's Resolution 41220R, I'll be withdrawing that. Under Resolutions held. And that's it for the legislation, we do, well, no, we do have Commissioner Deeds to take up, which we also have, but beyond that, that's, that's the end of all of what we have. Mr. Igo, you had a clap?
I apologize, everybody, for coming in late, I drive my son home from from Yonka getting a COVID shot, and things were a little late, but when I got home, I saw, I, there was a amended local law J I got from JR. And I tried getting my old copy up, and I can't compare it all right now, is, is this on the agenda for tonight?
It's to be amended, not for vote, it's just to be amended, yeah.
Because I was wondering, it says that it was amended a week ago, and we're getting it tonight, it just confused me a bit.
Yeah, well, the thing is, even those amendments from a week ago would have to be noticed or at this meeting, as amendment, so it's the same idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone?
Looks like Council, Councilman Robinson has his hand raised.
Oh, yeah, I just know that I was present, I didn't know if you got my attendance.
Okay. Duly noted. Anyone have anything else? Jenny, I see, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that it is Michelle's last meeting with us, she'll be fortunately staying with the city, but I, we said some nice things to her last week, we're of course so lucky to have her, but I also wanted to point out that we're all very aware of the many things that Michelle does. So if members can be aware that we will not have someone in that role, so there will be some things that will not be able to be done in the same level. Committee chairs are going to have to do our own minutes. Danielle and JR will be helping out, but they already have very full plates. The listing did go out today, I believe, Danielle, didn't it?
It promised me they were going to post it on, on Wednesday, so it should be up and live, so hopefully, you know, we'll get some bites.
I can confirm it's already up.
Yeah.
So, so we are moving along on filling the position. We hope that she, they're half of, half as wonderful as Michelle. And, but just to keep that in mind, everyone, because we're going to have to all kind of pitch in for a bit.
Mr. Anani has his hand up, and then I see Tom.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to say that the members who are on the interview committee for John Raphael, and also Jared, you know, I strongly recommend, because those individuals know how to pick out some talent, and we've been so blessed. So I just want to say, just put it forward, those individuals who have been on those committees, on the interview committee, to be on that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's good that you mentioned that, because we're gonna be re, you know, comprising that, that group, well, not the same group, we're going to try to get other members involved in this process also, because that, it's the right thing to do, so. So we'll, we'll be putting feelers out to see who's interested in participating in the interviews. Hello, Judy, I see, go ahead.
Hi, so I just want to comment, yes, we were extremely lucky to have Michelle, I think more lucky than many of us really quite understand until we miss her. But as we're talking about hoping that, you know, good qualified people apply. I want to note that I spotted Michelle in a finance committee meeting assisting Mr. Kelly, and I did reach out to her after that, because I thought that she had a lot, it was evident that she had a lot of the qualities that in, in helping build through that presentation, almost immediately after he became Corporation Counsel, that she had a lot of qualities that we could use. So my point is, think about all of the people that you've come into contact with in the city and out, who have a lot of those great organizational qualities. You know, I, I think it was a nice promotion for Michelle, I think that we used a lot of talents that weren't being used. So it's also an opportunity to pluck somebody from a position where they're being underutilized and maybe come and help us and help us sooner than later. So I just want to encourage people, just think of every single person you know that is working for the city or outside the city, and reach out to them and encourage them to apply.
Mr. Howie.
Yeah, I wanted to find out, can we do temp services until we get a replacement? If there's a long, going to be a long break between, I, I don't know if that's happened in the past.
Yeah, well, what we've done is, is kind of roles adjusted a little bit, the clerk helped out, the deputy clerk helped out to try to, to make things work, and our intention right now is, at least in the short term, to have the work be adjusted between tho, those three, well, clerk, deputy clerk, and our research council, to try to spread the work, to try to get us to, to the point where we hopefully have a new hire, if not, maybe, I mean, that's a consideration, certainly, having some temp help. Actually, Danielle brought that to my attention, because she's, she's also a genius at, at this and making things work for us, so.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to Michelle, but when are we going to have the conversation that we probably need to have when it comes to these positions that are connected to the council? And the money is always better somewhere else, and I think that this has come up a number of times in my three years on the, on the council. And we have to start putting the jobs in the city in, in a, in a position to where, you know, we don't get people, and they, you know, stay here for a second, and the next thing you know, they're gone, so. I know that there's been discussion about getting more support for the council and the legislative assistant, because of the amount of work that they have to, you know, be responsible for, so. You know, I just wanted to go on record as bringing that up, and that's something that we should be trying to address, because moving forward, you know, it's always good to find good talent, but it's even better to keep it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I don't see any other hands. Okay. Just got a couple minutes, I, I personally like to say, thank you, Michelle, I, I think everyone here is going on about how you've helped them. I think I'm the person that you probably helped more than anyone or anything in this, I mean, you anticipate what we need, and you filled a lot of holes for me, so, so thank you, I know you'll still be with the city, so I'll see you. But you, you've made a huge difference, you've taken our social media to a different level, and we, we, we can only hope to get someone that's, that's half as, as good as you. So, and, and hopefully, since you're going to be so close by, if we need some advice or, or some tips, you know, in the short term, you can, you can help us out with those. So, thank you.
I think Councilman Flynn is trying to speak, but he's muted.
Sure he's not eating?
Oh, no, I'm fine, thank you.
What's the final Jeopardy question?
That's what I was wondering.
No one's cueing the music from the bodyguard, and I will always love you, I mean.
You can sing it, Danielle.
I'd be competing with Jeopardy in the background.
Actually, Richard would be the best shot, Richard's actually in a chorus.
What was the question?
And I will always love you, and I pointed out that of all the people to sing, you are the best one to sing, because you are actually a singer.
Haven't done it for a while, I've missed those days, I hope we can get back doing concerts soon, anyway.
Well, it's now seven o'clock, and we'll call the order of common council meeting, February 18th. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, Anani.
Present.
Ballerin.
Here.
Conti.
Here.
Doschet.
Here.
Fahey.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Here.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson. Robinson?
I don't see him.
Yeah, doesn't look like he's.
Looks like we have 14 members present, one absent.
Was here early, I guess.
He was.
Could be, yeah, could be internet issues, thank you. Now, if you will, Adam Clerk, if you put up the pledge, the flag for we join us with a pledge allegiance, and then a moment of silence after that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we'll move on to our public comment section, portion of the agenda. And now we'll move on to our public comment section portion of the agenda. Like any public comment, any person has five minutes to speak on any topic they so choose to speak upon. And we ask that you state your name and address for the record. Um, at that time, council members cannot answer or respond to your comments. If they choose to do so, they will do so later, uh, in the agenda. So I know we have a number of, uh, number of written, um, public comments, correct? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have over 40 written public comments and we have several members that interest, that express interest to speak that are with us tonight in our Zoom. Would you like me to start with them first?
Yes.
Okay, the first one that I have is Fred Pfeifer.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thank you, uh, Danielle. Thank you, President Ellis and other rest of your council, uh, members for the opportunity for me to speak tonight. As you know, I'm speaking on the anti-worker, uh, Albany Code. My name is Fred Pfeifer. I reside at 124 North Pine Avenue, Albany. I'm a chartered member of the Solidarity Committee of the Capital District and a retired labor representative and organizer as well as a machinist by trade. I have resided and worked in the area for almost 50 years. I am commenting today on Albany Code, Article Five, Section 62, five through eight. It's clear to me that the intent of this ordinance is to protect workers' rights to collective bargaining and to negotiate a fair contract. To that end, employers should not bring anyone into the dispute that is not directly involved, such as outside strike breakers. This puts pressure on employers such as Albany Medical Center to negotiate fairly. When managers have to do the work of the workers they manage, they quickly appreciate what it takes to do the work. Sometimes they forget. Republican President Ronald Reagan broke the informal contract between business and labor not to use scabs as replacement workers. The result has been that honest relationships between employer and employee have in many cases broken down. At some point, public sentiment afforded the city leaders such as yourselves to enact legislation protecting workers and the citizens of Albany against outside replacement workers. They abolished the use of scabs to stop the undermining of workers' rights and the resulting turmoil it creates. The council should publicly stand against the use of replacement workers for both public safety and to demonstrate the right of the RNs, in this case at AMC, to a fair contract. The employer should not be allowed to beat workers into submission with his upper hand. The use of scabs is the hammer going up and then coming down on the healthcare heroes who are praised for their works and at the same time castigated for exercising their right to withhold their labor when being treated unfairly. These frontline workers have shown up to fight the scourge of COVID-19 and in some cases forfeited their health and lives. This is superhuman effort and compassion. The use of scabs is not super and we should never cede the right and responsibility to protect our workers and our community. Workers who create their own organizations so that they carry out their mission humanely for both parents and their families are heroes. An employer ideally should say to the workers when they come to him or her, "It's about time you respected your labor enough to stand up for yourselves. I welcome you and your union to register your voice for better operations in a budget that includes all of us." Don't we wish? When we see bosses and managers abrogating their responsibility to the community, it is incumbent upon all of us to speak out. There has to be consequences. To paraphrase the words of Irish statesman Edmund Burke, "All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is that good people do nothing." Let's do something to balance the scales and give workers their democratic rights in a free society. Resolve to support the intentions and law of the Albany Code and make public your disdain for the use of replacement workers to bust the voice, NISNA, the Union of the Registered Nurses at our Albany Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Doug Bullock.
Good evening, uh, council folks. My name's Doug Bullock. I reside at 77 Benson Street in Albany, New York. I'm First Vice President of the Albany County Central Federation of Labor. I'm also a former Albany County, uh, legislator. I come to you today and I just see a lot of friends here. Hello Joyce, how are you Judy? Hello Jeannie, hey Kathy, hey, and Cory and Owusu and Mike. A- and of course Alfredo. Good to see you all and, and hope everybody's well, uh, during the COVID, uh, crisis. It looks like we, we've, um, hit the, uh, top of the curve and it's started to come down. I hope that's true. Uh, that's, that was, uh, Albany Med nurses have been fighting the, uh, COVID epidemic for almost a year now. Their fight has been going on constantly for personal protective equipment. They haven't got it still. They're still short of masks. They're short of equipment for, from the hospital. And the hospital has a inventory that just won't allow, uh, the nurses to, uh, access the PPE adequately. They have an on-time corporate model for inventory and personal protective equipment. And it doesn't work during the, uh, COVID crisis. The other crisis the nurses are having at Albany Med is, uh, short staffing. The staff i- is really short and, uh, they've been talking about short staffing for, for years now. And, uh, ever since they, uh, they, uh, they, they elected the union into Albany Med. That was two years ago. Now, when you, uh, have a union election and the union wins the election by such a, uh, big majority as Albany Med does, you start negotiations immediately. So it's been over two years now that Albany Med has stalled for, on negotiations. And why have they stalled? They stalled because if you stall under national labor law, you can decertify the union. So they want another shot at the apple. They, you know, this is the best way to get that second shot is to stall and delay and delay. They went ahead back then and hired a, uh, union busting law firm, Von Schenck and Kang. And at that point, uh, their strategy wa- was to, uh, continue stalling. On December 1st of 2020, the, uh, the union and the, the, uh, nurses at Albany Med called for a one-day strike, a one-day strike. What Albany Med did to counter the one-day strike, they hired replacement workers, replacement nurses' workers. I understand they hired over 700 replacement nurses' workers at that time. And they hired them for double the rate of pay, but they had to hire them on a three-day contract. So with a one-day strike called, the nurses were forced to stay out two extra days. And those two extra days amounted to a lockout by Albany Med. Now, this is during the peak of the COVID crisis, which is outrageous. To, when you come to think of it, all these folks, replacement workers coming into Albany Med during the COVID crisis produced another crisis within Albany Med. Because, you know, you're not supposed to have this kind of, a crowd coming in with new contacts and, and contract tra- tracing goes out the door. So what, what we have done here and with Tom Horry.
Have one minute left.
For putting forth this resolution i- is, uh, to enforce the ordinance, the code, the Albany Code, which forbids the hiring of replacement workers. The only other thing I would ask on this resolution is we find out where these, uh, res- these, uh, replacement workers came from. Their state, their city, their town, their, uh, uh, because I know that most of them came from out of state. But it's important to find out that, that fact along with to find out how many they hired, what it cost them, how much they were paid and how much they, uh, infiltrated the Albany Med, uh, staff in order to, uh, to get this, uh, pay. I, I think that, uh, we, we, we have to enforce code. Okay.
Thank you so much. No problem, thank you so much. Can the clerk call the next speaker, please?
Next speaker that I have is Hannah Crowdel. She indicated that she wanted to provide her comments live, but I don't see her as one of the participants in tonight's meeting. But we're fortunate enough that she, uh, put her comments in writing for the meeting. And they read as follows. "I wish to speak on issues pertaining to the global COVID-19 crisis and poverty. As millions are rising out of poverty, the pandemic has pulled them right back in. I wish to speak about the Borgen Project, a national organization that works to engage citizens locally in efforts to see stronger US leadership go toward improving living conditions at home and abroad. I wish to discuss how addressing global poverty abroad produces new jobs in America and Albany, New York." That was her comment. Anne Kissler also indicated that she would like to provide her comments live and she's not with us, but she did provide her written ones. "My name is Anne Kissler and I have lived in the capital region for 40 years. I reside in Delmar. I am writing to urge the Albany Common Council to stand with the Albany Med nurses by supporting the resolution asking the City of Albany to enforce its code against strike breaking. It has been upsetting and very difficult to watch how the nurses at Albany Med have been mistreated as they are consistently obstructed from their fully legal right to organize and to get a union contract. Albany Med punished the nurses for a one-day strike by hiring at a huge cost, strike breakers and locking the nurses out for two days. Is this the way to treat people who have come to work and put their lives on the line during COVID and who skillfully administer to us when we are sick in the hospital? These nurses need and deserve our respect. It is in our best interest to stand with them, to support them and to demand that they are treated like the professional they are. Anything less is shameful." The next comment is from Bill Ritchie. His comment reads as such. "Resolution calling for the enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One Administrative Legislation, Labor Strike Five, I'm sorry, Labor Article Five Strike Breakers. Common Council Members, good evening. I'm writing to urge your support for the above resolution introduced by Council Member Thomas Howie. Registered nurses at Albany Medical Center have been trying hard for years to con- to conclude a labor agreement with their employer. It came as no surprise to me that the file, that following a one-day strike at AMC, management locked the nurses out for the following two days claiming that agency temporary scab employees were replacing these hard-working incompetent employees. So much for patient care, so much for patient safety. The history of labor-management relations at Albany Medical Center reflects an animus which is at its heart a rabid, rapidly anti-union. We all want Albany Med to be a great hospital and community partner. This wish cannot be realized as long as hospital management resorts to hiring hundreds of so-called replacement workers, locking out essential workers particularly during the present COVID pandemic. And their lawyers continue to stonewall the legitimate contract proposals provided by AMC nurses. Albany is not the Wild West. It is a union town. No hospital or other entity in our community can be allowed to sabotage the legitimate efforts of working people to join a union to fight for decent remuneration and working conditions and the best interest of their interests of the welfare of their patient clients. Thank you for your consideration to my statement of support for the resolution." Next one is from Ray Bromley. "Albany Med's disgraceful treatment of its nurses. I support Tom Howie's resolution." James Kaufman, "I write to you today to urge you to support enforcement of the anti-scab legislation, which was adopted some 70-plus years ago in the City of Albany, New York, but to my knowledge has not been enforced. Laws are supposed to create rights, but only if enforced. This country provides the right to form a union, embarking collectively with your employer. However, the right to withhold labor when the employer refuses to negotiate in good faith is lost when the employers can hire scabs to break strikes. This tips the scale in favor of the employer during labor disputes. Please adopt the resolution put forward by Councilman Howie and force employers in the City of Albany to play by the rules. Thank you." Jim Kaufman, Legislative Director, All American Postal Workers Union, Albany, New York, Local 390. Next comment is from Charles K. Alexander II. "Please support Council Member Tom Howie's resolution calling on the City of Albany to enforce its existing law against the use of strike breakers in the city specifically by Albany Medical Center." Dorothy Trismann is the next comment. Hers reads as such. "My name is Dorothy Trismann. I have lived in Albany since 1980. During that time, I have received care at Albany Medical Center on numerous occasions. The nurses there have been superb, both professionally and on a human, personal level. I'm so grateful to them and want them to receive all the benefits and recognition they truly deserve. It is my understanding that for the past couple of years, the nurses at Albany Med have been consistently obstructed in their legal right to organize and get a contract. This frustrating effort culminated in a one-day strike by the nurses, which was then punished by the hiring of strike breakers by the wealthy management of Albany Med and the lockout of the striking nurses for an additional two days. I am told that this effort to punish the striking nurses violated a City of Albany Code against the use of strike breakers. I urge the Common Council to take a stand against this illegal and disgusting behavior on the part of Albany Med's management. Frankly, they should be kissing the ground those hard-working nurses walk on. Please, Albany Common Council, stand with the nurses by supporting the resolution asking the City of Albany to enforce its code against strike breaking." Arthur Fleischner. "I've lived in Troy, New York for over 40 years and have used Albany Medical Center many times for myself and family. The nursing staff has always treated us in a professional manner. I am aware that over two years ago, an overwhelming number of nurses voted to unionize. However, Albany Medical Center has refused to agree to a contract. Even more outrageous is their behavior during the union's one-day strike when they violated an Albany ordinance against the use of strike-breaking scabs. This law has been on the books for many years and should be enforced. I respectfully request the Albany Council to follow the law and impose sanctions against Albany Medical Center." Lawrence Whitner. "My name is Lawrence Whitner and I have lived in the City of Albany for the past 42 years. I reside at 78 Cakely Street. I strongly urge the Albany Common, Common Council to support the resolution calling upon the City of Albany to enforce its code regarding strike breakers. The management of Albany Medical Center, one of the capital district's largest wealthiest enterprises, tried for years to prevent the hard-working, underpaid nurses at its many medical facilities from voting to have a union representation. Then more than two years ago, after the nurses at Albany Medical Center, by an overwhelming vote approved union representation by the New York State Nurses Association, management adopted the tactic that many unscrupulous employers used to destroy a fledgling union, denying it a first contract. In response to management's tactic of bargaining in bad faith, the nurses and their community supporters have staged numerous rallies, picketed, held press conferences, posted lawn signs and distributed literature. But management stubbornly refused to offer its workers a fair contract. Finally, in the context of COVID-19 pandemic, when the nurses worked understaffed without adequate personal protective equipment and at risk of disease and death, they staged a one-day strike this past December. And what was the response of management at Albany Medical Center? It not only hired strike breakers to replace the nurses on that day, but employed these same strike breakers at great expense for an additional two days while it locked out the nurses. This conduct by management of this giant local enterprise is unethical. And furthermore, under the City of Albany's code, it is illegal. Therefore, I strongly urge the Albany Common Council to s- express its dismay with the behavior of the Albany Medical Center's management by passing this resolution, calling upon the City of Albany to enforce its code against strike breakers." Mr. President, how, how are we with time for public comment? You're, you're muted.
Sorry, I don't know how to, you have 10 more minutes?
Okay. Daniel Musquera. "I'd like to write in firm support of the resolution. It is disheartening to witness that in the middle of a pandemic, the Albany Medical Center management..." It is disheartening to witness that in the middle of a pandemic, the Albany Medical Center management branch remains stubbornly married to a business model that is simply suicidal. Nurses and health service professionals are a lifeline into the, into the present and future. We should be treating them with the care and respect they deserve and treat them with a responsible and responsive attitude that will motivate them to love their work and perform it with the dedication we expect of them. They're a community, our community. We should not be fighting for their right to demand fairness. When treating, when treated with dignity and given the dignity and independence of work conditions they deserve, everyone wins. That is the ultimate goal of community. It is outrageous that after two years of demanding dignified labor conditions, we have come to this. The shitty, the city should make Albany Med respond professionally as well as communal. We, the city, have let them expand not to increase the wealth of a few, but to increase the living conditions of the many. And they have ignored their ethical and responsible business, calling, calling. Society trusts nurses above any other professional entity for very specific reasons. Give them the dignity they deserve. Next comment is from Megan Ferry. I write in support of nurses at Albany Med to unionize and for the Albany Med to release its hiring information on nurse strike breakers to the Albany Common Council. Sandy Stuben, a ban on strike breakers. Is it worth the law? Why would the Common Council even think of not advocating for enforcement is beyond me. The nurses deserve everything we can give them and more. Please use the ban on strike breakers to rein in the corporate management of Albany Med. D. Allen Curly. This is to encourage the enforcement of the Albany Municipal Ordinance banning the use of strike breakers in the current dispute at Albany Medical Center. Brett Benjamin. I strongly support the resolution criticizing Albany Med's use of strike breakers. It is outrageous that nurses should be treated with such indignity during a pandemic. The Albany Common Council should cens- censure the anti-union, anti-worker, and anti-public health actions of Albany Med. Please pass this resolution. Lana Cable. In defense of Albany Medical Center's dedicated nurses, I wish to protest the center's recent efforts to quash their union organizing, not only during the current pandemic, but also during normal times. Good public health management requires well-trained nurses to be given the respect and full support they deserve as mandated by law. Angela Kaufman, writing to express support for the law banning strike breakers. Linda Latandra. Resolution calling for the enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One Administrative Legislation, Labor Article Five Strike Breakers. I urge you to enforce this code. Nurses do the bulk of the work in our healthcare system and deserve to be treated with respect, decent wages, and working conditions. Greg Giorgio. Strike Breakers Law and AMC. While not a city resident, I'm Secretary of the Upstate New York IWW Ranch and members living and working in Albany. AMC's forcing nurses of NYSN A out of, out on strike and hiring scabs while publicly claiming fair bargaining and labor relations in an effort to common sense, in an affront to common sense and the members of my mad every union. The Common Council has the power and legal precedent through an existing law to prevent the sanctioning of unfair practices to continue threatening the lives and security of nurses at Albany Med. In the midst of a pandemic, please be attentive to this injustice and please enforce the existing strike breakers law. An injury to one is an injury to all. Thanks. Jose Cruz. It has come to my attention that nurses at Albany Medical Center called a twenty-four-hour strike on December first, twenty-twenty in response to stalled negotiations. And that instead of making an effect, an effort to negotiate, Albany Medical Center management hired hundreds of strike breakers, replacement nurses, and locked its own nurses out for two days after the strike. Given that the city of Albany has on its books an anti-strike-breaking law, I write to ask the Common Council to vote in favor of the resolution sponsored by Councilman Tom Howey, calling for the Common Council to, to express its strong displeasure with Albany Medical Center management at the apparent lack of good faith in, in its negotiations with the Nurses Union and to enforce its law code and prosecute Albany Medical Center management for violation of city law. Jordan F. Ferrara. Enforce this law. This is a pandemic, and these are the people that have been working the hardest to fight it. Don't pay lip service by simply saying we support essential workers. Actually do it when it is within your powers to do so. Thank you. Catherine Mules. I think it is very important that the city of Albany enforce its own laws regarding strike breaking. Albany Medical Center flagrantly disregarded this law in their treatment towards Albany Med nurses' strike. Justice OSHA and the National Labor Relations Board have opened investigations into Albany Medical Center for its questionable safety and labor practices. The city of Albany must prosecute those involved in Albany Medical Center's strike-breaking actions to the fullest extent possible, all the way up to its leadership. AMC's leadership had produced the circumstances in which Albany Med nurses felt obligated to strike, then openly hired strike breakers in defiance of city law. It is abundantly clear that Albany Med nurses have Albany residents' interests at heart and that Albany Medical Center's leadership does not. Perhaps once Albany Medical Center's leaders understand that their actions have consequences, they will begin to make ethical labor and safety decisions instead. Susan Dubois. I'm writing to submit a written comment in support of Councilmember Howey's resolution on enforcing Albany's law against the use of strike breakers. Albany Medical Center has been stonewalling for too long on settling a first contract with its nurses who are represented by the New York State Nurses Association. The second resolved of the resolution about getting information on the number of strike breakers and how much it costs to hire them could be quite revealing if AMC responds. The information may show that AMC is willing to pay large amounts to freeze out a union, but not to increase staffing or pay its nurses' wage. James Collins. Resolution on Albany City Code forbidding the use of strike breakers. I urge the Common Council to support this resolution. AMC's use of strike breaker replacements to damage the New York State Nurses Association nurses' strike is one more case of corporate employer aggression against the wages and working conditions of their employees. As the largest healthcare employee in the region and the recipient of many millions of dollars in public funds, AMC should be sanctioned for its violation of Albany law prohibiting the use of strike breakers. It is disgusting, a moral act by the administration of AMC. Are we still good on time? Hannah Crowdel.
How many more do you have?
Um. Oh, a, a stack about yay thick.
Because we only have, uh, so we have another half an hour of public comment. I think we could, if the president pro temp is okay with that, extend public comment period?
Yes, yes, sir. We should do extend public comment thirty minutes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Who's in favor?
I.
Motion passes.
All right, I can pick back up at Hannah Crowdel, who says, "My name is Hannah Crowdel, and I am commenting as a constituent of Albany and as an ambassador for the Borgan Project. We're a national organization that works to engage citizens locally in efforts to see stronger U.S. leadership go towards improving living conditions. Like many U.S. cities, the city of Albany benefits from the recent reduction in hunger rates and poverty globally. The rising number of consumers worldwide opens new markets at home. I'd like to ask the Albany City Council to send a letter to Senator Schumer, Senator Gillibrand, and Representative Tonko, letting them know that the council views global development programs as crucial for creating more consumers globally and new markets for Albany's businesses. Thank you for listening to this comment and for your consideration." Ava DeSantis. I support the enforcement of Albany's existing anti-strike-breaking law for Albany Med's nurses. Casperugia. As a resident of Albany, I'm writing in solidarity with our nurses who have been tirelessly saving lives through the COVID-19 crisis and risking their own lives in the process. It is outrageous that their needs, such as higher wages and proper staffing and PPE, are not being met. We must support our nurses and demand that Albany Medical Center stops hiring strike breaker replacement nurses at vastly higher pay than their own staff are even negotiating for. According to the City of Albany, New York Code, Chapter sixty-two, Labor Article Five, Strike Breakers, no person, partnership, firm, or corporation involved in a labor dispute shall directly or indirectly employ in the place of an employee involved in such dispute any person who customarily and repeatedly offers himself for employment in the place of employees involved in a labor dispute or contract or arrange with any other person, partnership, agency, firm, or corporation to recruit, procure, supply, or refer persons for employment who customarily and repeatedly offer themselves for employment in place of employees involved in such labor dispute. These anti-strike-breaking laws must be enforced. Colin Clark. I support the enforcement of Albany's existing anti-strike-breaking law for Albany Med's nurses. John Davis. I'm writing to you to express my strong support for the resolution submitted by Councilmember Tom Howey, which calls on the city of Albany to enforce its existing law banning the use of strike breakers. And more particularly, to hold the management of Albany Medical Center accountable for its recent use of strike breakers to replace lawfully striking nurses represented by the New York State Nurses Association. Strike breaking is not only unlawful, it is ultimately unproductive and self-defeating. Respectfully submitted, Dr. John B. Davis, lifelong resident of the city of Albany and member of the United University Professors. Thomas Costella. Please enforce the law prohibiting the use of strike breakers, such as those AMC brought in during the labor dispute. AMC is having with its nurses. Thank you. Carrie Gardner. Nurses at Albany Medical Center? The nurses have been mistreated, and I urge the city of Albany, New York, to enforce its law code and prosecute Albany Medical Center management for violation of the law. Clayton Brett. Almost exactly one hundred years ago to the day, an article appeared in the Times Union. Between three hundred and four hundred experienced professional strike breakers recruited by an agency owner who specializes in strike-breaking services left Grand Central Terminal in the afternoon on their way to Albany to be ready to operate cars on the strike block lines of the United Traction Company here the next morning. Times Union, February seventh, nineteen twenty-one. The UTC strike that winter was ugly and violent, lasting through the summer before it finally ended with little achieved by either side. For the most part, trolley riders, that is, the electorate, supported the workers. The strike may actually have helped bring an end to longtime Republican rule in Albany because of the machine support of the UTC over its workers. In November nineteen twenty-nine, twenty-one, Democrat William Hackett was elected mayor with the help of Dan O'Connell, ushering the one-hundred-year rule of the Albany Democratic machine. Today, things are not so different. We have learned that approximately seven hundred nurses were bused in to Albany Medical Center Hospital on a three-day contract starting December first of twenty-twenty as replacements for members of the New York Nurses Association, following the one-day strike on that date. Those replacement nurses met the definition of strike breakers, and it is illegal, and it has been illegal for them to be brought into Albany since the end of the Republican control of the city. The legal ban on strike breakers is a reminder of the city's longtime support for labor, and to fail to enforce the ban in this instance would be a betrayal of a longstanding tradition. I urge the Common Council to pass the current resolution to enforce Part One, Article Five of the City Code regarding to the use of strike breakers by Albany Medical Center Hospital Administration against these nurses. Thank you. Keith Estes. Enforce the city of Albany's anti-strike-breaking law on Albany Medical Center for its strike-breaking actions on their own nurses. They hired strike-breaking nurses on December one of twenty-twenty, and that is illegal. Reprimand Albany Medical Center. Candace Leiter. Tom Howey's resolution calling for the enforcement of the City of Albany Code, Part One Administrative Legislation, Labor Article Five, Strike Breakers. The Albany Medical Center nurses have been seeking a union contract for over two years, yet the AMC management has refused to negotiate a fair contract with the union. The nurses have endured poor working conditions, lack of PPEs and, and understaffing, and low salaries. They presented their case to the public through rallies, picket lines, and press conferences to no avail. The AMC management continued to stall. On December one, twenty-twenty, the AMC nurses hauled a strike, which was promptly rebuffed by hiring replacement workers for the duration of the strike and for two days afterward, while locking out the AMC nursing staff. It is for this reason I fully support Albany Common Councilmember Tom Howey's resolution calling for the enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One Administrative Legislation/Labor Article Five, Strike Breakers. I support the AMC nurses and their struggle for a fair contract. They have been there for us during this time of crisis. Now we have to be there for them. Reverend Ibrahim Pedrin, Pedrin Yan. Resolution calling on the enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One Administrative Legislation, Labor Article Five, Strike Breakers. Albany Medical Center management has since April two thousand eighteen, nearly three years, refused to give the nurses an official voice in their workplace. Albany Medical Center management has, for nearly three years, refused to acknowledge the united voices of their own nurses through their union affiliations with NYSN A. AMC management has, for nearly three years, refused to protect the community by protecting those who's, who safeguard the health and well-being of our families. AMC management has, for nearly three years, refused to engage in a democratic process with the nurses at the bargaining table, and thus has deprived the nurses and community the very right to democracy, the foundation of our country, state, and city. Nurses went out on a one-day strike on December first, twenty-twenty, but were thereafter locked out by strike breakers hired by AMC management. This is against the law cited in this resolution. Albany Medical Center management has not simply behaved immorally. AMC management has now refused to obey the law. This resolution aims to prohibit AMC from acting as if it is above the law. We have seen that too often in the last four years. AMC management now has state intervention because of their negligence in their response to COVID after a third outbreak in three months. This is what happens when AMC management sacrifices nurses and community safety for their bottom line, for the billionaire board, for their anti-democratic stance. The time is now. Pass this resolution. Hold Albany Medical Center management accountable. Protect our nurses who protect our community. Keep Albany a moral, ethical, lawful place to live. Don't let the greed and disdain of Albany Medical Center management for its own workers, for our community, for our laws, for anything that's not money or power persist even one more moment. With the unanimous, unanimous voice of the Albany Count- County Central Federation of Labor, representing thirty thousand union members, I implore you to pass this resolution and hold Albany Medical Center management accountable to this law. Reverend Ibrahim Pedrin Yan, President, Albany County, Central Federation of Labor. All power to the workers. Sean Collins. Resolution calling for the enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One Administrative Legislation, Labor Article Five, Strike Breakers. My name is Sean Collins. I'm the treasurer of the Troy Area Labor Council, AFL-CIO. I will keep my comments brief, as I know other unionists, community supporters, and Albany residents are also speaking to this important issue. I urge the Common Council to pass the resolution and Albany's mayor enforce the city's code as it relates to strike breakers. Most members of this council are on the record in support of AMC nurses. When Albany Med management locked out their nurses in retaliation for engaging in the federally protected right to strike, this council was silent. The city's code was unenforced. Albany Med Management's lawbreaking went unaddressed. This is unacceptable. If this council truly stands with AMC nurses, it will quickly pass this resolution and then work hard to hold AMC management accountable for its lawbreaking. Jonathan Flanders. Strike Breaker Law. Please implement it with AMC. I am a member of the Troy Area Labor Council. Cheryl DeCrosta. I am in full support of Resolution Calling for the Enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One Administrative Legislation, Labor Article Five, Strike Breakers. Pat Whalen. Common Council Members. I'm writing in support of the above resolution introduced by Councilmember Tom Howey. The use of replacement workers, i.e. scabs, to serve as substitutes for employees who are on strike is Is an unconscionable practice that undermines the right to secure fair working conditions through collective bargaining. Laws against this practice have been adopted in many countries around the world. And it is heartening to discover that there is such a law on the books here in Albany. The registered nurses at Albany Medical Center have been attempting to come to terms with their employer for two years now. And when they recently went out on a one-day strike, Albany Med brought in replacement workers. This was a clear violation of the above cited law. And it was a particularly distasteful thing for Albany Med to have done, given the fact that nurses are currently putting their lives on the line to protect us all from COVID. I'm sure you will agree that Albany Med behaved in a way that was unacceptable. That they should be called to account for their violations of the law. And that the law should be vigorously enforced in connection with any similar situations that might arise in the future. I thank you for your attention to this important matter, Pat Whalen. Barbara Baxton, common council members, good evening, I'm writing to urge your support for the resolution introduced by council member Thomas Howie. Jonathan Skinner, enforcing the anti-strike breaker law, please enforce this law against Albany Medical Center. The nurses are professionals like physicians and deserve not to be treated like simple, easily replaced cogs in a machine. Management should listen to them and address their concerns, not lock them out. Paul Stasi, I am strongly in support of this resolution, the right to strike is a core principle of unions. It represents nothing more than a basic principle of a market society such as ours. The refusal to sell your commodity, in this case labor, for the price offered. The resolution simply asked the common council to enforce the existing law. For that reason, it should be uncontroversial. I hope it will easily pass. And finally, from Steve Zaharic, Union City. Albany is not the wild, wild west, it is a union town. No hospital or other entity in our community can be allowed to sabotage the legitimate efforts of working people to join a union. To fight for decent remuneration and working conditions and the best interest of their. Interests of the welfare of their patient clients, thank you for your attention to my statement of support for the resolution. And that concludes the written comments that I received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you so much for that. Do we have any other speakers for public comment period? Seeing none, we will have this public comment period closed at this time. Now we'll move on to our agenda with local laws, introduction of local laws, Ms. Farrell.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Minutes approval.
Thank you so much, I didn't have that on my, I missed the first half because I couldn't get in. Thank you, sir. Okay, we want to approve a minute.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President, for the Monday, February 1st, 2021 meeting minutes for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Nine.
All those opposed? Approval of minutes passes, thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Now moving on consideration of local laws, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, I noticed local law B of 2021 and asked for its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Could the clerk please read the local law?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll read the local law and then the message of necessity submitted by the mayor. Local, local law amending Article 2 Assessment and Collection of Taxes of Chapter 333 Taxation. Of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to delaying the implementation of interest on delinquent tax bills. During the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The message of necessity from the mayor reads as follows. Requesting immediate passage of local law B of 2021 without the statutory aging period. Under Section 20. Dashboard of the Municipal Home Rule Law, the common council may dispense with the usual aging requirement for a local law if the mayor. Shall have certified as to the necessity for its immediate passage and such local law be passed by the affirmative vote of two-thirds. Of the total voting power of the legislative body. We hereby certify that local law B of 2021. Which will delay the imposition of interest on delinquent real property tax payments. Requires immediate passage at the February 18, 2021 meeting of the common council. The COVID-19 pandemic has caused a significant financial strain on the many city residents. Further late fees will be added to tax bills as of March 1st, 2021 if local law B of 2021. Is passed at the February 18 council meeting, the treasurer's office will be able to tell residents with certainty. That no interest will be imposed on top of such late payments until June 1st of 2021. And that once, that concludes the message of necessity.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, any further discussion on this local law? Ms. Farrell, I think, Ms. Farrell?
I just would note, we spoke with the treasurer about this, this is. To allow, as was said in the message of necessity, to allow our residents to not pay. Any interest until June 1st and it also follows state legislation. So it can give our residents a much needed leeway if they do need it.
Thank you so much, seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll? Oh, Mr. Oh, sorry, Mr. Anani, sorry, Mr. Anani.
Mr. Anani, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to first of just commend the treasurer and also thank Corporation Council for essentially being vigilant on this issue. This pandemic is impacting so many families all across our city, across our state, across our country. And everyone is hurting, homeowners, renters, all the above. And this piece of legislation will be waiving the interest fee for individuals who decide to pay late. You know, I firmly believe that government can't solve everyone's problem, but we can help individuals help themselves and that's exactly what we're doing. This is not a handout, I want to thank everyone who has been helpful. And helping residents in these challenging times, so again, just want to thank my colleagues, thank the treasurer, want to thank Corporation Council. Government matters in these challenging times and is incumbent upon us to figure out solutions and alleviate the burden that so many. Residents in our city are facing, so I want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Further discussions? Seeing none, can the clerk please call a roll?
If all members could unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their names, Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Baller.
Yes, and I think, is everybody a co-sponsor already on this?
Yes, everyone's a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Auntie. Dosha.
Yes.
Fahey.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
That's 14 in the affirmative.
Local law passes, continuing on with local laws held, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President, I noticed local law G and ask for its passage on a roll call thereon.
Thank you, sir, can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending Chapter 42. Departments and Commissions of the Code of the City of Albany by adding a new Part 39 entitled City of Albany Commission on Municipal Internet Service. And providing for the responsibilities of the commission with respect to researching the logistics and financing of a city-owned. High-speed internet service and requiring the commission to make findings and recommendations to the mayor. And the common council regarding the creation of such infrastructure.
Thank you. Discussion on the local law, Mr. Anani? Mr. Anani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President, I've been saying this for years. Albany need access to the internet, you know. We need municipal internet access for all Albany residents. This bill would establish a commission of 10 people appointed by the mayor. And the common council to study the feasibility of developing a citywide municipal service internet. The commission will be tasked with reviewing all relevant questions. Related to the ability for the city of Albany to successfully develop and operate such a service. The COVID-19 pandemic has revealed significant inequities in so many areas of our life. In particular is highlight the inequities in the digital divide and the digital access. Which is so necessary in these, in these challenging times for remote schooling. For work from home, computer access, internet access, technology training. Support programs are essential to digital learning. And also for the digital economy and communication through this pandemic. A city school district Albany measures suggest that upwards of 40%. Of red students don't have access to the internet. A reliable internet connection determines whether or not a child is able to consistently attend classes. It is estimated, and this was done in 2017. That 29% of current Albany residents do not have home internet access because they cannot afford it. They cannot work from home, apply for jobs online, recertify for unemployment claims or request services online. So many of us cannot even communicate with loved ones. While nursing homes and hospitals are closed to visitors and Zoom is primarily the option. Mr. President, people without a digital access cannot attend virtual meetings that we're having right now. They cannot watch government function without internet access. Nor can they order groceries online or attend telemed appointments. I bring these examples up because they illustrate the importance of internet in everyday lives. And the lack of access is substantial to the barriers to various necessities of opportunity. Internet access is an important, if not more important, Mr. President, than telephone service. Albany residents for far too long have been forced to deal with subpar internet service and without a low-cost alternative. The residents are struggling. The primary internet provider in Albany Spectrum Charter, or like I like to call them Spectrum Green. Charges too much and provide too little and they're being forced out of the state by the governor and state legislatures. Verizon files and other providers are not willing to provide internet service in this city. Meaning that there's no market competition to facilitate a more affordable service. Without viable alternatives, we need to take matters into our own hands. And the most effective way of doing that is to create a municipal-run internet service. Access support and establishing a commission to investigate this. Let's look at the facts, Mr. President, cities with municipal-run internet service have the fastest and the most affordable service. Quality service that the money can get. Secondly, created competition will ultimately improve the quality of this service from all providers. Finally, citizen-owned providers constantly will expand the service and ensure that it remains affordable to all customers. As president, a successful, affordable, reliable municipal broadband service will be a game changer. I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this. Some people thought that this day would not come, but I just want to thank everyone. From all my council members, staff, Corporation Council and administration, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just completely agree, the lack of access to the internet here in the city of Albany for so many people is. Is, you know, such an incredible problem that's been heightened by the pandemic. I always think of the students in particular. It's hard enough even with, for the students who do have access, but to not have access, they really don't have a chance. One of the things I wanted to, so I do commend my colleague Awusunani. For pushing hard to get this started. One of the things I did want to mention is that there was a assessment feasibility study done back in. I think it was completed in 2017, started in 2015. And that task force really did some very good work and I'm hoping that some of the. Entities that were involved at that time would become re-involved and that included. The Albany Public Library, our downtown and Central Avenue bids. City School District, our charter schools, Albany Housing Authority, common council was represented. Albany Promise and the Center for Technology and Government at U Albany and other business leaders, so. As we put this commission together, I hope some of these individuals who were involved. In coming up with really terrific recommendations and. Will become re-involved with this commission, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey, Mr. Howie.
Yeah, I have over 40 years of networking experience with computers and I commend Councilman Anani for pushing this forward. There has been since that study that Councilwoman Fahey mentioned, there's been changes. You know, out there and new technologies, one of them is Starlink, which is Elon Musk's company. Where they're going to offer internet service to everywhere on the planet. But when I looked at the prices which were just announced, I actually was on the waiting list. It's $100 a month, actually $99 a month, which is kind of out of, you know, the range for a lot of our citizens. And then we also have the 5G network that's being pushed out there. And we've known over the last few years, we've seen these boxes going up on top of telephone poles. We've seen poles going up with equipment on it and that's for the 5G service. And I just got notified by Verizon that they'll offer internet service for the home. If you have Verizon Wireless, $50 a month, but if you don't, it's $70 a month. And again, this puts it out of the range of large families or people who are, you know, just struggling to get by. And with this pandemic and people learning from home. This is not a good situation, it shouldn't be that we can't learn because we don't have money. The basic right, what this country was founded on was a free education for all. And not to be able to provide an education during circumstances like we're going through is criminal. So hopefully that Councilman Nani's will get this task force together. And we'll come up with something that's unique and unusual and it'll be good for our city, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baller.
Thank you, Councilman President Ellis, we all know that they should divide. We're all experiencing it, we're all seeing it, we're all reading about the stories. Of our young people doing their work on their phones because that's the only means of access that they have. I think now is the time, and I said it at the committee meeting. I think now is the time where there's going to be more resources put in place to try to address this issue. So I'm glad we're moving forward with a committee to look at this problem in our city. I'm glad we're moving forward with a committee to see what other resources are out there, what other options there are. Whether it's a municipal internet, whether it's vouchers for our low-income residents. Whether it's hats, bats that help provide some assistance, but more than what we have now is needed. I think it's wrong that our residents are paying more than residents in our suburban districts. If you cross Mr. Howie's ward from his ward into Gilderlin. Your price in internet goes down just by stepping just a few feet from the city of Albany line into Gilderlin. Once you're in Gilderlin, you have multiple options which drops the price down. That is wrong. That is wrong. And those are the type of issues that we need to look to address. So I support this measure, and I hope this committee can come together with some resolutions to this problem. Thank you.
Okay, I will be standing in for President Ellis for a short time here. Any further comments? Who's next?
Councilmember Johnson has his hand up.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. For being on top of this, but it's sad that in a pandemic, you know, I live this every day as an educator, as a homeschool coordinator, our responsibility is to address barriers that prevent our students from even participating. And internet right now, at this time and day, is very important when you can't have, you know, almost fifty percent of your school attend in-person learning. And it's sad that we have to, it took the effort of one person and, you know, others' other support that we're going to form a committee. I think that the time calls for immediate action because, you know, it's bad enough, the daily barriers that are presented in educating today's kids, when you have to factor in that parts of Albany have free internet and the parts that really need it the most, they don't even have that opportunity. So I think that, you know, for my nine to my eight before, us being able to address this digital divide would be a game changer. And I know that the teachers that work with our kids on a daily basis would, you know, be empowered in this difficult situation we are in with educating today's kids. So I will be supporting it, and I would like to see something done immediately because, you know, every day that we have to go through, kids not being able to get on the internet and having to share phones, you know, this is real, real time, this is what we are dealing with. So I will be supporting it once again, and I just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Seeing no further hands of discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti? Conti? Dosha?
Yes.
Conti, was that a yes vote for you?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Pharaoh?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Hoy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Iga?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbra?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love? O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes. Thank you. Continuing on with local laws held, Mr. Conti, I think local law J and local law M. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend local law J pursuant to the amendments that were previously distributed and request that it be held.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Conti, local?
Local law M. Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend the local law M with the amendments that were previously distributed and request that it be held.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Now continuing on down our agenda, you're done with local laws. Mr. Kimbra?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, oh, excuse me, best of local laws are held, sorry. Yes.
Thank you, no problem. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning Land Use and Economic Development Committee met on February third to discuss local law J, which establishes the commission to research logistics and financing of city-owned high-speed internet, make findings and recommendations. It was passed out with a positive recommendation. The committee also met on February sixteenth to discuss local law M of 2020, which strengthens oversight by the Historic Rights Commission, Historic Resources Commission regarding emergency demolitions and stabilizations in historic districts. And we discussed ordinance 219220, which presents some new standards requiring notification of emergency demolitions and stabilizations to the Historic Resources Commission and requiring transmission of reports supporting these actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Mr. O'Brien?
The Subcommittee Regarding the Golf Course and Future Recreational Opportunities there will meet on Monday, February 22nd at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Miss Pharaoh?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee will be meeting on March fourth. We're going to get an update from the City Treasurer and the Budget Director on the city's finances, and also within that, hopefully some updates on how state aid looks. We're also going to be discussing ordinance number forty-four point one-two-two-point-two-zero, that directing closing Scott Street. Ordinance number forty-five point one-two-two-point-two-zero, and that is authorizing the sale of Scott Street. And then resolution number thirteen point twenty-one point twenty-one R. Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the elimination of one full-time position and the creation of another, which will affect the salary total for the 2020 budget.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pharaoh. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Council Operations Committee has two meetings scheduled, one on Tuesday, March sixteen, to consider local law L of 2020, related to residency requirements for members seeking election to the, for individuals seeking collection to the Common Council. And local law A of 2021 in relation to nonpartisan elections. Those are both charter amendments that would be subject to referendum. And we're meeting again on Tuesday, March twenty-third, to consider local law F of 2019, which is the Ethics Reform Package.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. So no more, Mr. Che, you did have your hand up before. I'm so sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. So the Housing and Community Development Committee will be meeting jointly with the board to review where we are with regarding community development block grants and the process and the applications. There will be a joint hearing held on, oh, so we're going to be meeting on March ninth, and then on March thirty-first, we'll be having a hearing for any appeals that there might be from the proposed awards of any grants. We may, at that point, make a recommendation on the ordinance for the approval of the budget at that time. And if there is not a consensus at that time, or there's anything more that we need to be looking at, we tentatively have scheduled a meeting for April seventh to finish our work for this year on that project.
Thank you, Ms. Dosha. Mr. Kimbra?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee met on February eighth to discuss local law J, the CPRB legislation, along with the Police Reform Collaborative Final Report. We came up with some amendments for local law J, which will be mentioned this evening. We're still working on the police collaborative report. We asked for a plan, and the administration responded. So we have two meetings scheduled, one on the second of March and one on the eighth to try to finish that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbra. That's being offered. Jack, do you have your hand up? You're muted. No, you don't? Okay, I thought you were going to report on your committee. Okay. Being said, we're moving on, continuing on with ordinances, going with ordinances held. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to withdraw ordinance forty-two point one-twelve point eighteen, which is listed as agenda item number two. And I'd like to amend, this is agenda item number ten, ordinance twenty-one point ninety-two point twenty. This is the ordinance in relation to demos in historic districts. Move to amend that ordinance with the amendments previously distributed and request that it be held.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Kimbra?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinances on the agenda are held.
Thank you, sir. Now we're moving on to resolutions introduced. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I offer resolution seventeen point twenty-two point twenty-one R. Request its passage and a vote thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council, supporting an amendment to Title VI of Article V of the New York State Public Authorities Law in relation to the Albany Municipal Water Finance Authority and Albany Water Board.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Conti?
Yeah, briefly, Mr. President. So under current law, the council has either confirmation or direct appointment authority to boards and commissions that are created under city code. And then there are certain boards or commissions or authorities that are established under state law. Among those is the IDA, for example, where state law provides that the council has the direct appointments, the parking authority, which is created under state law, in which the council has confirmation authority, and also, I believe, the Convention Center authority, which is still out there, which is created under state law. And we do, as I recall, confirm the mayor's appointment to that authority, which is, hasn't happened for a while. But one of the major areas where there are public authority that is directly related to city government is the Water Authority Finance Board and the Water Boards, there are actually two, where the mayor makes the, basically makes the appointments, but the council has no confirmation authority. And obviously, these are significant bodies that are part of city government and make significant decisions regarding water use rates, et cetera. So it's really only appropriate that we should have authority to be able to confirm those appointments as well. It would require a change in the state law. So this is a resolution directed to our legislative representatives that they introduce legislation amending the Public Authorities Law to provide that the Common Council have confirmation authority over appointments to those two boards. We did pass a resolution similar to this back in, I believe, it was twenty-two thousand eight. We had different representatives in the Assembly at that time. There was no action. Sometimes a little phone call can prevent things from happening from the corner office. So I'd like to maybe, you know, try again. We have different reps and see if we can get some traction on this. So I appreciate your support on this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Conti, for the discussion on this resolution. And am I correct that all members are co-sponsors? Am I correct? Okay, so since all members are co-sponsor, we'll do a voice vote on this. For all those in favor of resolution, sorry, nineteen twenty-two twenty-one? Thank you so much, council members. Resolution passes. Moving on to continue with resolutions introduced. Ms. Fahy?
Mr. Ellis? Mr. Ellis, excuse me, I'm just wondering if anybody else heard you ask for the vote on nineteen point twenty-two point twenty-one R as opposed to seventeen point twenty-two point twenty-one R? I just want to make sure the record is reflecting that it was on seventeen point twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dosha.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution eighteen twenty-two twenty-one R and ask for its introduction.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council, confirming the reappointment of Jeffrey Sperry as a member of the chairperson of the Albany Parking, as a member and the chairperson of the Albany Parking Authority.
Mr. Kimbra?
My, I'm muted. Thank you, Mr. President, for the referral to the Planning Committee.
Thank you. Continuing on resolutions introduced. Mr. Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution nineteen twenty-two dot twenty-one R and ask for its passage thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution calling for the enforcement of the City of Albany's Code, Part One, Administrative Legislation/Labor, Article Five, Strikebreakers.
Thank you. Discussion on the resolution. Mr. Hoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've been at the Albany Med demonstrations going on even before, longer than three years ago. Several times, a union was tried to be formed at the hospital and didn't succeed. Three years ago, it did succeed, and they've been going without a contract all these years. I was approached by two labor leaders, Fred Pfeifer and Dr. Larry Whitner, and told that there's a law in our books that says bringing in strikebreakers, which Albany Med did on December first, is illegal. And looking at the law and going over it, it looks to me like they did break the law. You know, this goes beyond, though. You know, it's a labor dispute, and there's always two sides. But in the middle of this labor dispute, we had a pandemic where these nurses, working without a contract, without raises for years, put their lives at risk. And then they were forced to use PPE that was old and it wasn't used the way it should be. It's supposed to be changed every, between every patient. And they were made to use the, like, the face mask for a week. And then they tried to disinfect them, and then you might wear a mask that somebody else wore, and it was just exposed to, you know, ultraviolet light. You know, to me, this is unacceptable. People who put their lives at risk to save other lives, what does that say to us as a society where we allow abuse of these workers? You know, the working people built this country, they built this state, they built this city. Every day, people go to work, and they shouldn't have to fight to get treated fairly. So, I mean, we've had a lot of comments tonight on this, and I want to thank my fellow council members, Awusunani, Jimmy Pharaoh, and Alfredo Ballerin for stepping up and saying, this is not right, is not right what is going on at Albany Med. Give them a contract, work it out later, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. Let's do something right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Ms. Pharaoh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend my colleague, Councilmember Hoy, for bringing this forward. It's a really important issue, and sometimes the statement is what matters. And so we'll see what can become of this, but I appreciate the opportunity to have my name on a strong statement saying that this is not okay and that we need to make sure that the health and welfare of our citizens are taken care of. the health and welfare of our citizens are taken care of. And the way we do that is by taking care of the people who are taking care of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Mr. Mallor.
Thank you, President Ellis. It was great to see so many people come out and speak on this subject today. One of the speakers spoke about the history that our city has in standing with workers. He mentioned the nineteen twenties and nineteen forties. I don't have to go that back to see when this council stood with workers. I can go back as far as two thousand seventeen, where you can Google City of Albany Common Council puts additional restrictions on hotels who are who are in the midst of contract negotiation. And that's a Time Union's article from December twenty, two thousand seventeen. So I bring that up because we have acted before in any way that we can to stand with workers, to stand with the individuals that are doing the hard work day in and day out. And I'm proud to stand with our nurses, as all of our members are, I know. And I know sometimes we have our back and forths, and it seems like we're we're contradicting each other when we all have the same thoughts, and and our history has shown that. Our history has shown that we stand with with the unions, and we stand with the people who are doing the hard work. And specifically in this case, these individuals, in one of the lowest moment in our history, have stood up and shown up time and day, time and time again, and done their job. So we didn't know what was going to happen when the council in two thousand seventeen, I wasn't a part of it. I we didn't get in this. I'm part of a new class that started in two thousand eighteen. So this council in two thousand seventeen, in December of two thousand seventeen, when they acted on this, didn't know what was going to happen. But by February of two thousand and eighteen, the contract had been signed. So we act because we know that there's a need to act. And our actions may have consequences that we don't that we hope for, but being I know how quickly they they come. So I'm here to stand with our our workers. I'm here to stand with our nurses. And I'm glad that this council has done it, has been historically done. And I I continue to hope that it will continue to stand with those who do the work and not just do the management. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallor. Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start by thanking Councilmember Hoy for bringing this forward. Very important piece of legislation tonight. I'd also like to thank all the all the public comment that we received. It was pretty impactful to listen to each of those and really hear the history of what everything, everything that occurred, and also hear the strong sentiment of understanding that this is completely wrong, what it would occur to Albany Med. I will be co-sponsoring this tonight. Our our nurses are the backbone of our society. They care for our our wounded and our sick, and they deserve the right to a fair contract. The fact that they had been waiting for two years is just straight unacceptable. And the fact that they they did a strike and then they were locked out for two days is something that Albany Med should be ashamed of. So I will be co-sponsoring this tonight, and thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. Mr. O'Brien, can I see your hand raised?
Yeah, I know our court counsel had raised some issue about the enforceability of the underlying ordinance. But to me, the operative language is the statement, "The common council of the City of Albany expresses its strongest project with the Albany Medical Center Management at the apparent lack of good faith in its negotiation with the Nurses Union." And that's a statement that I think which needs to be said. And for that reason, I'm going to be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel comfortable in actually saying that members of this body support support this legislation and support our nurses. This this negotiation's been long overdue. This is this is actually personal to me. I happen to live within Albany Med RN. And I've been out there on the picket lines with her, and I've watched her leave on Tuesdays for almost two years, going out to negotiate to the Desmond or wherever, and she's spending her whole days there and then going to work at night. So this is real and and important to me. And and also, I, you know, personally, again, my my mom was a thirty-year RN at Lexington Village for CSEA. In that union, I'm a twenty-two year member of the Albany Police Department and Council eighty-two. So I I understand the impact that a union can have on wages and benefits for a family. It's it's this is whether it's enforceable or not isn't the point, and I think I mentioned that at our caucus. It this is us expressing how we feel about this issue and how we feel about what's going on. So I wholeheartedly support this. Thanks. Thank you, Tom, for putting this together and being persistent with it.
Thank you. Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I feel like it was such a long time ago when we were out there in the cold, supporting our nurses here in our city. I think one something that Albany Med executives and Albany leadership tend to forget is that Albany is a union town, whether you like it or not, right? We live in a democracy. There was a vote, and they shall honor that vote. I'm always proud to stand with Albany Med nurses. They do life-saving work time and time after time. And Albany executives and management are really having supported safe staffing levels. Its board of directors has failed to come up with a fair contract. Many of us at one point rely on the nurses at Albany Med to go to the hospital at a moment's notice because or sometimes for us, sometimes for loved ones. And during those difficult times, whether it was during business hours or on a Sunday at three AM, many of us have come to depend on the quick action and response of our nurses. It's no secret, my parents were both nurses, and I'm very familiar with the sacrifices that they had to make. My dad having to wake up at four AM and coming back home at four PM and going to sleep at six, six PM. Not really spent a lot of time with family. And my mom, similar instance, and it was that you you negotiated pension that made it an opportunity for my family to purchase our first home. It was that union negotiated pension that my mom borrowed so we could send my oldest sister to college. So I tell all the people that spoke earlier and also members of the union, you don't have to worry about me standing up for you because unions have always stood up for my family and I. And I will continue to support our nurses. You know, I spoke to the council president a couple of months ago about this issue, that one of the biggest employees, they're not paying their fair contract. Other other employees are watching what Albany Med is doing. And then once we win this battle, it is going to inspire others to want to pay a fair contract. St. Peters, Ellis Hospital, Saratoga Hospital, you name it. And that's why this fight is worth having. And I want to thank my colleagues in government, the nurses out there who have been advocating, agitating. Keep it up. Keep it up. Because this fight, while less long, we will win. And it's not just for your family, but it's for so many countless residents. It's for a fight for children that are not even born yet. And these are the fights that's always worth having. For the past few weeks, we have heard from nurses talk about the challenges that they have provided care while other units are chronically short-staffed. And when they're short-staffed, it it makes it difficult for them to do their job. So there's no excuses for the Albany Med executives and leadership on what they've been doing to our nurses. There's no excuses as to why our region regions' largest hospital doesn't have safe staffing. Every other day, I'm hearing Albany Med expanding, 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 expanding. And I'll tell you this, we will remember this. The voluntary agreement, I don't even believe that they're up to par with paying the residents, paying the City of Albany. Now, look, let's face it, I appreciate the great work that Albany Center Albany Med Center provide and what they do for the community over the years. However, when it comes to down to this, we care more about the nurses. We care about their their work that they're doing with the life-saving work that they do. And we want to make sure the nurses at Albany Med Center are treated fairly and are respected by management. Because that's the way we can ensure that our nurses can do their job at their full potential. And for those who spoke earlier and those nurses who are watching, I want to be clear, the common council stands with you. I want the nurses at Albany Med Management to know this. Albany is a union town. A union bustin' is disgusting. And I encourage all my colleagues to continue legislating, advocating, agitating, marching until Albany Med nurses get their fair contract that they deserve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you to Mr. Anani. No further discussion. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti. Dushet.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahey.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell.
Farrell. Yes.
Flynn.
Flynn.
Yes.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Hoy.
Yes.
Yes.
I go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Johnson.
Kimbrough.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Love.
Love.
O'Brien.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Yes.
Robinson.
Robinson.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. I I hope people have to be excused. I don't know if it's my so forgive that if anyone's listening. I'm continuing on with resolutions introduced. Mr. Kimbrough. Majority consent.
Oh, thank you. I'm looking right at it. I'd like to make the motion to add resolution twenty twenty-two twenty-one and resolution twenty-one twenty-two twenty-one by majority consent.
Is there a second on that motion? There's a second by Ms. Dushay. Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
Is opposed? Motion passes. Continue, Ms. Dushay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution twenty point twenty-two point twenty-one R for introduction and referral to committee.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution designating the mayor to act as official representative of the City of Albany to submit annually to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the annual action plan and amendments thereto under the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's a referral to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
Continue on with resolutions introduced. Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you. I noticed resolution twenty-one point twenty-two twenty-one, and I ask for his passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the City of Albany's Common Council condemning the hate-filled and racist attacks on the Council of Albany Neighborhood Associations, C A N A.
Let's go show this resolution, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Still Brian?
Yes. On February third, Kane was holding its monthly meeting in honor of Black History Month. And there were two excellent presentations by the African-American Cultural Center of the Capital Region and by the Rap Road Historical Association. During this meeting, it was crashed. It was a virtual meeting, and it was crashed by some anonymous individuals who ranted a very offensive racist and hate-filled speech. And I feel that the council should voice its strong objection to the condemnation of this kind of behavior.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any further discussion on this resolution? Did you all are co-sponsors? We will do a voice vote on this one. For all those in favor of resolution twenty-one, favor of resolution twenty-one. Twenty-two, twenty-one. Twenty-two, twenty-one.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Continuing on resolutions, going to resolutions held, Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, agenda item number four, Resolution four twelve twenty-eight R. I'd like to withdraw.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Continuing on, we have Commissioner Deeds, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the following names. I notice following persons be hereby appointed the Commissioner Deeds for the City of Albany for the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and read the reading of the names.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. Mr. Kimbrough, any miscellaneous or the business?
No, just
Mr. Johnson.
Michelle.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, our community has had some huge losses. Notably, Mr. Mackey, Warren Mackey, I think the, you know, city did a great job and 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 send him, Mr. Mackey off. But we also lost Victor Wallace Kane. And many of us know Victor as being someone who loved the City of Albany, loved his people. He worked. He retired from the Albany City School District as a homeschool coordinator. He also held the position of the president of the Albany Housing Board for twenty years. And just, you know, on a personal note, Matt, you know, Vic and Warren were like the unofficial mayors of our city. You know, and you know, people who guys learned a lot, you know, and I'm gonna speak for myself, who I learned a lot from in just dealing with people, you know. It wasn't a person, you know, Vic loved the police. He loved whoever was his boss. You know, he just loved being able to help people. And, you know, it's gonna be difficult for people when they walk in stewards and and not to see Vic's face. It's gonna be difficult, you know, when people that he helped, if you look at some of the comments made by about Vic and his loss is, you know, people talk about guidance, counselors, teachers, principals, but you know, it's people like in the hallways, the monitors that really catch people at pivotal moments in their life, and they have conversations with them when they feel like they're ready to give up. And, you know, many expects express their sadness of Vic passing on. But, you know, they also shared the stories and and and, you know, the positive conversations that he had and, you know, what our our community losing, you know, such top people as Father Young and Warren and Victor. I just hope that we are able to do something to reflect the years of service that they gave to the city and, you know, to the people. And I just wanted to make sure that if, you know, something was said in this council meeting on behalf of Victor and his love that he had for the city. And if I'm not mistaken, Victor ran for the Victor ran for the council, I believe, like twelve years ago. So I just wanted to recognize Vic and let him know he did a job well done. And thank you for your your love and your support for the people in the great city of Albany.
DJ, I'd just like to say that
I just like
it's echoing, but you know what? Both of them gentlemen, they discussed their smile just made everybody's lives easier. Both of them guys, they were the it just brought happiness to people that when they needed it. That's all I like to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. Mr. Howie?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President and fellow council members. I received a few days ago a certified letter I had to sign for from Council eighty-two. You know, I read it. I am disturbed. I I can understand what they're they're talking about. You know, we're community members, and one of my neighbors, his backyard butts up against mine. He's a dispatcher. And hearing the the struggles that they're going through every day, these again are frontline workers. They're understaffed. They can't keep people in. I think they're underpaid. They're going through negotiations and, you know, with this city. But my feeling is that they've sent us information before. They reached out before and my neighbor said to me, you guys never answered us. You never acknowledged that we have a problem. So I'm hoping moving forward now with the second letter that's come out, whether we agree with everything they say in there or not, but at least that we listen. And and I think that's what our jobs are, is to listen to the people in our city and to our workers. And, you know, make a decision then. But I just feel terrible that they feel they were ignored. And I hope we can do something moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to second everything that Mr. Johnson has said with regard to Victor Kane. Both Warren, losing both Warren and Victor, especially so close together, what a great loss for our city. Warren, you know, if you haven't had a chance to read the article in the Times Union, it's a great article. I thanked Mr. Hughes for that tribute. And I commented that you know, he was, one of the things about Warren was he wasn't boastful about what he was doing for everybody. He was just there, and he was just doing it. He was such a good soul. And the same for Victor. Victor, just like Joe Igo says, just put a smile on your face. My sons both got to know him at Albany High, and that's how I got to know him. And I I have a picture of Victor Kane giving my oldest son the biggest bear hug you would ever want to see when he walked off the stage at graduation with his diploma in the hand. And that's the kind of relationship that he had with so many of our students at Albany High School. And just those kids always knowing that Victor was gonna be in their corner, I think really made a big difference in everybody's lives. And it's a true loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. And as as Mr. Johnson has repeatedly said, I think, I know, I don't think Mr. Kane, Mr. Mackey, especially Mr. Kane in high school, he, the job that he did was well over, above and beyond the job that he, you know, that he had officially had with the high school. So we cannot be remiss of people going above and beyond what their job title is and being an asset to every child, every kid in that school. So, yes, Victor will be missed as well. Also, just quickly, Mr. Howie's comment about us listening. I think the council has listened. When it comes to this, I think we do share sentiments that, of course, overworked staff is not good. People need to be hired. And that's, you know, that's the quintessential thing when you have a union. You want to make sure people aren't overworked. They're not underpaid. You want to make sure those things happen. But this union is not coming to us asking us for pay raises, I don't think. What they're asking for is us to do away with the law. Is council supported? And before that happens, for us to listen to them, they have to listen to us as well. And we need to see data. We need to see data of why they would request that. And I have not seen it. We don't get data on who they interview. We don't get data on why those people didn't get those jobs when they interviewed. We don't get data on what steps people who interviewed, how far they got in that interview process, why didn't they get those jobs? When we start collecting that type of data, then we will be have, we can have a fair more assessment on whether we need to lift residency requirement for any job in the city. So I would, I would say to any department in this city that is having trouble hiring people and come to the council to lift that, present the data of the work, of the effort of those who applied, why, based off of gender, race, and everything else. Why didn't they not hire those folks? Give us data on that. What 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 were the failings of those individuals? And then we can, you know, then we can have a conversation, a real conversation. But, of course, you know, if you have too much overtime going on, of course, you need to hire people. So I think the the, you know, looking at us to solve the solution of hiring people, unfortunately, that's not our job. So they need to really talk to Command and whoever does the hiring over there to find out why, why those positions aren't being in the field. Mr. O'Brien?
As I remember, about four or five years ago, the council did spend an amount of time on on this. At that time, it was a pay raise, but it was also the issue of the overtime and the understaffing. And the council did get involved. And they did get a pay raise about equal to what they were asking. And quite frankly, I had not followed it since then. That had to be about five years ago. I would think that, you know, whatever the mechanism is for, you know, talking with their union, their leadership, whatever, I think it's, I think it's worth listening to what they have to say. We did four or five years ago and achieved some satisfactory agreement for a while. But I certainly appreciate the work they do, and I think it's dangerous to have them being understaffed and working so many mandatory shifts. And on some cases, a significant number of cases, being understaffed. And one of the things that we talked about back then was that the thought of rolling our dispatchers into the county dispatching operation, which would mean a pay increase for them. And I thought that was being seriously considered, but then that talk went absolutely silent. So at least I think there's enough questions that we might want to have some people come in and brief us on, first of all, whatever happened to that initiative? And what might be some solutions to having our dispatchers understaffed?
That's, thank you. Thank you for those statements, Mike. Once again, I said earlier, those aren't the things we heard from them. If we heard those things, we have public comment period. I'm pretty sure this this, I know, I'm not pretty sure, this this council as a whole has has been advocates of, you know, when it, when we see those that work for city government are not paid what they should pay, this council has been an advocate for that. So I I think if that was one of the issues, I know this council would like to address it. So we've only been asked to address the residency requirement. So absolutely willing to sit down and listen, especially what you just said about rolling with the county. That could be a possibility. So we more than welcome those those conversations. But, Ms. Kimbrough?
Yeah, yes. Thank you for your comments, Mr. President. It was my intention to to meet with them to hear personally, to hear their complaints. Of course, with the understanding that we obviously can't insert ourselves into the collective bargaining process. And again, to the president's point about the residency requirement, that's that's really the the overriding idea of of both of the letters. But I will I'm making arrangements to meet with them and and discuss the overall. But with the understanding that the residency we want, the residency residency law and rule, it's there for a reason. So with that being said, I'll I'll meet with them and and I'll report back to you all on on the discussion.
Mr. Igo? Joe, I can't believe Joe raised his hand. Joe, this is the first time you've raised your hand. Normally, just chime in.
Little yellow hand down there only works
Clapping. He's been clapping.
I just have
That's what happens when you're a senior member.
Yeah.
On the council, that is. Go ahead.
Senior experience. It's just maybe a suggestion. I've been looking at all these different pieces of legislation down here. Some of them are pretty big, and every time they're amended, okay? And you don't have someone to read to, like I used to for years, like Jack or whatever. But you try doing a line by line or whatever to try to difference in the amendment, it'd be so much easier if you do what the state legislature did. Just run the numbers down the side of line. And if you have page numbers, someone can give you a simple explanation, even for the line amendment and say, hey, page, page two, line thirty-six, this is where the change is. I tried today going through a twenty-six-page bill to find something that I hadn't even had yet, you know, and it's almost impossible. Just trying to make things easier for everybody and because we're getting a lot of big legislation. I don't think you could do it on a renumbering the USDO or something like that. But I don't know what's gonna come up, whether it's collaborative, if it's gonna be a resolution, if it's, you know what I mean? But if someone has suggestions, you go right down and say, pay, you know, just just food for thought. If anyone's ever dealt with it before, it's a whole lot easier. So that's it. The old man's talking again.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, I make the motion to adjourn.
Second, there's a second by Ms. Farrell. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 In adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Stay safe.